Call to order and welcome guest. It's a little after six o'clock. We need to go ahead and call to order and welcome guest.
Chairman Clemens.
Here.
Commissioner Watson.
Here.
Commissioner Marchman.
Here.
To call Row to establish quorum. Let's see, Mr. Larry Duke here, he's going to do our invocation, and then Mark Purcell is going to do the pledge for us. Thank you all.
Lord, we come to you tonight in thanking you for this great county that you've allowed us to live in and love so much. Father, we thank you for what's available here to the citizens of this county, and I thank you for the commission that we have. I thank you, Lord, for Chairman Clemens and Associate Chairmen Kerry and Gary. I thank you so much for them. Thank you for what you're giving them and the wisdom that you're giving them. But Father, tonight I ask you, above everything else right now, that you would give these three men and those that work with them, liberal wisdom, wisdom to just be overpowered with wisdom, to know how to do and what to do and when to do. Father, I thank you for that. I know, Lord, you promised us that if we'd just asked for it, and we thank you for it today. Lord, of everything that we have today, the great gifts that we have of living in this county, Father, most of all, we have you and we have your Son, Jesus Christ, as our life and as our life to be able to carry out here in this county. We thank you for that. In the name of Jesus, we pray, amen.
Please place the colors. Attention, salute, pledge.
Pledge and limitations to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Number three, approve the minutes of the March 16, 2021 meeting and March 26, 21 emergency meeting. Appropriations expended here, personal action payroll requisitions, approve all journal entries to be posted.
Make motion to approve item three.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass. Number four, public comments and updates.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to express my gratitude to the commission, my coworkers, and the community for the support and the words of kindness they showed me as I went through the loss of my mother, Linda Chievoe, and I sincerely ask that God bless it, bless each and every one of you.
Brian, we love you, man. We appreciate you so much. Any other comments? I'd like to recognize two new hirees that's going to serve with us here at the Coleman County Commission. Shane Bailey, I know he's right here. Can you stand up, Shane? Shane's going to be working with our facilities and all our fleet management, so I think he's going to save taxpayers a lot of money. He's got 22, 22 years' experience with ADECA, and he's going to be a big asset to us. And we got Stephanie Lawson right here. She'll be, if you'll stand up, Stephanie, we appreciate you.
You ought to come up front, would you say?
She's going to be our new director over commission on agent, and it's honored to have you and serve with you. Thank you so much. Appreciate you. Number five, we'll move on to new business. A, ratify the city of Coleman abatement for BBLU Incorporated by Coleman City Economic Development Agency in the amount of $955,000.
I'm trying to rate myself off saying good morning. That's too easy. Yeah, so this is an abatement for, it's actually for the city of South Feimont. I just handle the paperwork for the city handles paperwork for all municipalities and the county that comes to abatements. This is actually an amendment to the abatement that was passed in February 2020. That was for a brand-new company that's a locally started company here in Coleman, and they actually are expanding, doing well, and they just want to add on to their abatement for some construction needs to increase their capacity. They will be adding an additional three jobs, so we're excited to see that. This abatement will, like I said, increase from $565,000 to this new investment number, which will create $35,000 plus for Coleman City Schools, or Coleman County Schools, excuse me.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to approve item A.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass. B, proclamation, recognize April as fire housing month.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, all this is, is just housekeeping matters to work with it so we can apply for more grants with ADECA, and I just recommend passing this. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
Make motion to approve item B.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass. We got two retirements, two recognitions here in Ms. Senior. I think she, I was called today. I think she is at a funeral. She's retiring after 18 years with the Coleman County Water Department. Then we got James Waters retiring after 12 years of service with the sanitation department. And I think, I don't know why he's not here, but...
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion to approve item C.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye. And I make the motion to approve item D.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass. E, resolution 2021-15 authorize the chairman to sign agreement between the State of Alabama and Coleman County Commission covering widening and resurfacing of County Road 1301 from SR-3, US-31 to County Road 1435, project number HRRR2221.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this is a safety report, and I love the resurfacing in there, and that is, I don't know if anybody sees that, but this is predominantly for improvement on the safety issues that are on that roadway, and I do recommend approval of this resolution.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion to approve item E.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass. L, resolution 2021-16 tax abatement for Project Triple J in the investment of $530,000.
Yes, so I have two amendments, as you see on the agenda. These are county projects. Just some things on cover, as I always like to do before we do abatements. One thing is, we never give away any money, no money is coming out of anybody's funds. This is just not collecting the tax, collecting a portion of tax. We do not take away from school funds in any form or fashion, so your educational funding still comes in every year. And another thing is, these projects, and I think this is the first time I've done this in a while, are under project names. That is because these products are competitive projects. We're competing for them, trying to win them to stay or come to Coleman. So we're working with other economic development partners we have, such as TBA in the state of Alabama, ADECA with Kenneth Boswell. And there are many people that try to help us out and win these projects. They offer programs, but in order to get those projects, these must be competitive confidential products. So what we're doing here is we're not actually giving abatement. We're promising to give an abatement if the company were to locate or grow in our region, so just wanted to clear that up. So just in case anybody thinks we're doing something, anything like that. Project Triple J is going to be a county project. It's just for $530,000, but this is a technology-based company with four jobs in phase one. These jobs will pay significantly higher wages than we see in Coleman County. We're talking 80 grand plus. We hope this is the first phase of something that's going to be a lot bigger, that will employ people at very high wage that we would love to see become Coleman County.
Make motion to approve item L.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass. G, resolution 2021-17 tax abatement for Project Sports in the investment of $2,230,000.
So again, this is a confidential project we're competing for. This project, again, will make a $2.23 million investment in our community. It'll be in the county, incorporated Coleman County. It will create 20 jobs that are at the county average. This is a company in the construction product business that is both industrial and residential and commercial products.
Mr. Chairman, make the motion to approve item G.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass. H, authorize Revenue Commissioner Barry Willingham to sign a contract with GovE's Auction LLC on behalf of the Coleman County Commission.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this is an amendment that exists in Contra. We currently have with GovE's to hold our tax sale properties online, and it's just a clarification for the parcels that comes up for resale, to make sure that everybody is knowing how much is going to be paid to the company. When a parcel goes up for auction, there's an additional $45 that's tacked on it for that sale, so the money's to pay, the company's actually coming out of that, so I think it's clear all required.
Make motion to approve item H.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass. I authorize the chairman to appoint John King to replace Joe Miner to the Jockey Water Board to expire three, one of 24.
Mr. Chairman, make the motion to approve item A.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass. J, authorize the chairman to sign settlement agreement on behalf of the Coleman County Commission.
Make motion to approve item J.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass. Authorize the chairman to sign auction agreement with J&amp;M Wood Auction Company to dispose of six tri-axle dump trucks between June 15th through the 18th of 2021.
Mr. Chairman, this is for last year's trucks, and it looks that the net guarantee will be approximately $3,400 less than our purchase for new trucks, but again, that is only a net guarantee. If the trucks suffer more, it could go back over to a gain.
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion to approve item K.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass. L, authorize the chairman to sign contract agreement with Pyro Show's of Alabama.
Mr. Chairman, this is the same contract. Firework people we use each year, well, maybe every three years, but it was paid for last year, but we didn't have it due to COVID. They just wanted to do contracts after this.
I truly, I think it's a blessing to get a firework show back, don't you do?
Yes, sir.
Thank you so much.
Make a motion to approve item L.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass. E, authorize sanitation director James Rello to purchase Rello's dumpsters not to exceed $100,000.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion to approve item M.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass. E, authorize chairman to sign contract with American Signal Corporation's alert system.
Yes, this is the mass notification system that we did in the webinar on March 31st. Their price is very reasonable. It allows us to set up pretty much unlimited groups, unlimited administrators, and send out unlimited messages, and the company will be doing all the training and uploading telephone numbers for landlines, residential land, business landlines in the county. And then there will be a webpage where people can go and sign up. It offers a lot more options than the company that we used before, especially that people can opt out very easily, and they can choose what kind of alerts they want, which is something we didn't all have on the issues.
Make motion to approve item E.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass. O, authorize the county attorney Emily Johnston to inquire about purchase price of commercial property adjacked to the Coleman County Ag Center.
Mr. Chairman, make the motion to approve item O.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass. P, consider COVID supplement payment to all county employees in the amount of $1,500 for full-time employees and $750 for part-time employees.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, this is a distribution of the CARES Act funds that were received back primarily for reimbursement for the Sheriff's Department payroll. The use of these funds would be to provide a $1,500 payment to all full-time employees of record as of the date of passing today and $750 to all part-time employees. And then there will be some remainder that the county would set aside and reserve, and the Sheriff's Department, the next item, will lead into, Sheriff's Department will receive the $993,213 as a distribution to them from the CARES Act funds.
Thank you, John, and I truly believe this is the way we can help our employees right now. We know we got this money set aside, and you know, there's no better way to use it than helping people that need help. And I know if you look at COVID for the last year, a lot of our employees have suffered. You know, we had 13 out at one time at the sanitation department, and I truly believe, you know, we need to help people when we can.
I agree with that 100% of what you said, Chairman, but I do think that, I do think we're jumping the gun just a little bit, not on the amount or not on the, not on the structure of it. I think the employees are well worth, since we can't give them a raise and sustain that raise, I think they're well worth a little boost in income. But I also think that we should have spent a little more time with looking at how it's structured and how we're going to disseminate it. I think there's, there could be times in the future that we can give them more money than this, or it may even require a little less than this, but I am a big advocate of giving the money. I just, I'm going to abstain from voting, Commissioner, because I think we need to look at the structure a little different.
John, how long, how long have you actually spent time working on this?
Well, Mr. Chairman, it was probably one of the first discussions we had when I started, so since January. We've been kind of in discussions with the sheriff and different commissioners, and so it's several months.
I think, I think it's something that is good for employees, good from around, and good. We've had a lot of things happen to employees, and our employees have been very dedicated during this time. They've showed that, you know, we've had people come in and work longer hours and take, you know, fill in for spots where they really wouldn't do things, and I think you've got to show some appreciation to your employees sometimes. And I know, I know Gary...
Yeah, I agree, I agree 100%. I mean, I've instituted training programs for the employees. I've begged for raises for employees. It's not like I'm against, and I'm not against any of the distribution of these CARES Act funds going to employees. I'm not against that. I think it's appropriate. But the argument that I had is, most of them just now got their CARES money that came down, you know, from the federal government. They just filed their taxes, you know, they've got their tax money, and there may be an opportunity later on in the year to give them even more money than this $1,500, and if you can give them $2,000 later on in the year rather than giving them $1,500 now, it would look more appropriate to me to give them at a time that's more needed than time when they've already received a little bit of boost from the government. So, and that was my only argument.
And I do understand that. I know where he's coming from, but I have talked to several employees, and I know, you know, this is not an easy situation, but it's all about helping people. And that's what we're here to do, you know. I truly believe being a leader in our community, you know, we're supposed to help people.
Yeah, and I agree too. And I understand that we have to help people, and we have to put that good foot forward to be a steward of the money that's provided to us by taxpayers, because this is all taxpayers' money. We have to be that steward, and I'm 100% for helping people. I'm not against that.
I understand. I mean...
And it's good, it's good that we can work together and disagree, and still work together to do what we need to do for the county. So, but I just, and I'm not disagreeing with the amount. I'm not disagreeing with anything, but I think the timing could be more appropriate for the employees.
Mr. Chairman, it's okay, Neil. I'd like to make a motion to approve item P.
I second. Q, consider transfer to the...
You got it.
Oh, that's okay, yes. Yeah, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And I second. Q, consider transfer to the Sheriff's Office CARES Act funds in the amount of $993,213 to reimburse the department for necessary expense incurred and cured due to public health emergency with respect to COVID-19 pandemic, including expenses incurred for labor and related cost of employees whose services were substantially dedicated to mitigating or responding to the pandemic.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, as you know, P and Q were associated together. Last year, we started with the CARES Act money, the, you know, the government sent so much out, and so we started researching it, and I really want to brag on Judy Bradford. We went to her, the previous administrator, and said, hey, look, there's an opportunity for us to get reimbursement, full reimbursement through the salaries of law enforcement. So we worked for months and months, and I know Judy got tired, me calling and all of us, but she did an amazing job and was able to put together a package where we were, you know, able to get approximately $2.3 million in reimbursement of CARES Act money, which as soon as we got it, we started the negotiations of how we could use it for the employees, and so we were able to come up with a conclusion. I think it's a positive for all county employees, and it's a positive for the Sheriff's Office, and we know we've all experienced the negatives of COVID. I think this is a positive for the employees and the community, and I appreciate y'all's negotiations and keep working so we can resolve this and make it possible for all the employees.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Mr. Chairman, make the motion to approve item...
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass. R, consider approval of budget amendment to correct clerical error in the annual budget change transfer for gold warrant payment from 116 Capital Improvement Fund to 112 Public Building Fund.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, this is just simply a clerical issue that in the annual budget, that number was associated with a transfer from a fund that should have been from another fund. It's as simple as changing a number, but the examiners would like to see, they typically like to see it's an official action.
Yes, sir.
It's really just to clarify it for the examiners and at all the time.
Thank you, John.
Make a motion to approve item R.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass. A, consider approval of the Narcoag dues and program match for FY 2021 total amount, $56,299.
This would just be the annual dues for the Narcoag membership.
Mr. Chairman, make the motion to approve item A.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass. T, consider surplus of six Kenworth tri-axle dump trucks with the VIN numbers underneath.
Mr. Chairman, these are the dump trucks being sold under item K with the J&amp;M Wood Auction Company. Do recommend surplus of these.
How close did you say we were on the money now?
We were right at 3400 per truck. That was just the net guarantee. Again, if the sales go better than their expected guarantee, then we could see it break even or even go to a gain.
So we've got a huge potential there to even do better, and one thing, we've driven that truck for a year for $3,400, a tri-axle dump truck. And that's just, yeah, so that's a good, this is a good problem.
Good problem. Thank you so much.
Yeah. Yeah, we actually, last year, made $80,000 on that, on that deal after driving them for a year. So it turned out to be a real good problem. It has been in the past, a real good problem. Thank you, Brian.
Appreciate you, Brian.
Make a motion to approve item T. I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass. U, consider ADS Security Systems proposal for Coleman County Economic Development and authorize chairman to sign agreement installation of $7,825, 4769 monthly.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, this is actually with my office and the sales tax officer upstairs. We're going to split that amount. It's going to be a key card system, just like we have here at the courthouse and other buildings around the county. We found that we have just the regular key, but we found instances where people are coming in and out that we don't know about. We think this would be better for security because of, you know, Mr. Watson working the sales tax. So you know, there's some stuff up there, probably in our office, that we don't need, who knows who's coming in and out.
You making that be the end of his bread, aren't you?
I guess so. I've already been there for six months, and I already got people coming in.
That's right. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass. V, consider purchase of a 2021 Ford F-154B4 Supercal for appraisal from the NAACP bid list in the amount of $27,366.
Well, I wish I could buy one for the price.
Yeah, me too.
Make a motion to approve item B. Do you want to say anything, Barry?
I was surprised when I called up there to see if they had anything or how long it would take to get one. He had one in stock where Huntsville, City Huntsville didn't come get it, refused it, so it's, I'm going to go get it as soon as I get a fit of it.
Make a motion to approve item B.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion, see?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pass. W, consider surplus of a 2008 Ford Crown Vic from the Sheriff's Office to be sold on GovDeals.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, this is just one of our vehicles that we had that's non-operable. You wanted the Sheriff's Office, so we'd just like it to be sold on the GovDeals with y'all's approval.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion to approve item W.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass. X, consider an amendment to the Coleman County Personal Policies and Procedures Section to U, item 6, to provide 25% of the host hotel rate in the event the host hotel is full. Policy language will be in the vote.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. You each have a copy of this proposed policy. The only addition to the existing policy is that it gives a little flexibility in the event that the host hotel at a county... event that the host hotel at a county conference is full, which has to be documented, and we get that documentation, it would give them up to 25% more. We've, we've looked at it, and the average that those host hotel rates are is about 25% less than other rates, so this would allow county employees, if it's full, to stay in a different hotel up to 25% more, still providing that protection of going over, you know, an exorbitant amount.
Yes.
Make a motion with approval out of X.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass. Y, bid number 1344, award bid for recycled asphalt payment, RAP million to Get Over Contracting Company Incorporated.
Mr. Chairman, this bid did come in higher than the previous one, but it would be in line with some pricing now, current pricing, and I would recommend approval, just so we have available, available when we do, where we do use this material.
Are we getting any recycled asphalt now, or...
That's probably the biggest issue, is that it's, it's become more in demand, so just once it becomes available is the biggest issue.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion with approval out of Y.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass. Z, bid number 1345, award bid for Crowd Crawler Dozer to Warrior Tractor for the Alabama Forestry Commission to use bid price of $189,900.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman and commissioners, this is a dozer that will be used for forestry. There will be a reversionary agreement in place so that it won't leave Coleman County, and if they decide to get rid of it, it's gotta come back to us, and we would also be able to recall that if we ever needed to in the future. They'll, they have a balance in their account with us, we're gonna use part of that, and then their allocation each year will help to pay that back to us over about four years.
Yeah, I just, I spoke with Allen May Hall a little bit ago, he would, he would have been here tonight, but he's got a big woods fire on 223, and this is truly, truly gonna be a benefit to help them putting out these wildfires, so thank y'all.
Make a motion with approval out of Z.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass. Double A, bid number 1346, award bid for hauling of aggregated asphalt and other various materials.
It does give us, reflects current pricing, and I would recommend approval of this bid for availability in the future years.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion with approval out of A.
I'll second that motion on double A.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass. Number six, the next commission work session will be Tuesday, May 18th, 2021, 4:30 PM, commission meeting room. Number seven, the next commission meeting will be Tuesday, May 18th, 2021, at 6:00 PM, in the commission meeting room. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion with adjourn.
Adjourn, adjourn. Thank all y'all for coming, appreciate y'all.